Well, get open your meeting first. No, we are live.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to remind everyone up here. People call me as they could not hear you in the other meetings. So when you speak, we are pleased. Lean up to the mic to speak that the people out in.
YouTube.
YouTube. I was going to say that. People out in YouTube world can hear you, okay? Give me a caution.
Yes, yes. Is that loud enough?
I think so.
That's just unsupplied again.
I feel like if you can hear yourself up here, they can hear you on here.
That's very thank you. Do you hear me?
Yes.
Paulson?
There you go.
So when you speak, please.
Yes, yes.
There you go. All right, there we go. Now, this is hereby given pursuant to Texas Open Meetings Act, and it is still in statute, Article 625217. If you have a meeting to have a council meeting workshop from June 14, 2023 at 1:30 PM in the council chambers of City Hall, 317 Main Street, Nashville, Texas. We're going to have first items update on action action items from May 31, 2023.
If you want order, I thought you wanted to switch off the arrangement. So did you not say what you wanted?
What are you speaking about? Short term. Oh, uh, maybe you can go ahead and. Oh, I thought you were speaking from the third. Oh, I apologize. Oh, no, you're okay. So updating action items on May 31. Robert Cattell will take care of this.
Okay, Council. Eric, good evening. We'll go to the next slide. I wanted to give you an update on the agenda. Today, we're going to talk about Action Labs workshop. Randy Center, we have no invite, is here to give his presentation on short term rental compliance solution for the city that I think will be very pleased with. Jason Ramble, our general counsel, will be here to provide an update on the subdivision organs. And if we have time and it can get into it, we'll talk about the smaller organs of the city prepared. Uh, there is a correlation between what Brandy is going to be presenting and what Jason has done. We'll talk about that during Brandy's um presentation. Sound good? Okay, as far as action labs from last shot on 31st. We were visiting Congress Market Task Force for recommendations and prepare a draft leasing agreement. At the June 12 council meeting that was done, that agreement has since been revised. Thank you, Council, for having us. You're doing that. Uh, and it's ready to go back to the organization for review. Uh, we wanted to take a look at extending the council agenda and discuss a policy of doing to hold a second meeting. That was discussed in this past council meeting. It was decided that we would hold one meeting, but the agendas have been, they will continue to be expanded as necessary. The end post, the quest was to post the council agenda. Uh, a couple of days earlier, decided we'll get that to the citizens and the council on the community or agenda by 5:00 PM Wednesday before the Monday meeting. And uh, we haven't had any problem doing that. It's only happened once, but I think you appreciate the information in advance. Did you clarify the requirements for basic items on the agenda? How do you get them on the agenda? This during the June 12 council meeting. A combination of any of the following, Baron, City Manager, uh, or council member, a combination thereof, and get something on the agenda. We wanted to uh place the street assessment report by Greenland and Turk on the website. We did that. We also reiterated that information. In my monthly report, give a good background as to how we just don't really really pick the streets to uh, to uh, to repay them. Actually, then the analysis of our streets and their rank, one to five, and I'm happy to report that we've got four streets. Recently paid, thank you, County, for helping us in that. Send that P and Z over to the council, did that. And also want to add an agenda item to update council on message board and progress toward redesigning, or also add a change to our being. So all actions from the past council workshop have been closed and completed. If you have a report. Questions, Council? All right, now I'd like to introduce uh, this Brandy Center who comes from us, from Louisiana, Bull Tigers. She's going to present. What I think makes opportunity for us to leverage these services that her company provides to help us manage short term rentals. If you'd like to relocate, so you can see, she's wanting to present.
Thank you, Mr. Robert. Is the audio okay? I actually wouldn't need the name like this. About making sure it's all right. It's a pleasure to be here and thank you all for giving this opportunity to see today. I uh, we'll talk to you about opening this first one through Avenue Fis. Um, I also must be filled about some of the challenges that the local cities are seeing regarding. Your things, which is my little illusion that actually um offers to a more researchable calculation. So we will start with some of the impacts of short term rentals. Uh, a lot of communities across the country have seen the short term rental population. Uh, three years ago, there were people talking about Airbnb and rent and city government, and now it's all. So as that role has happened, you'll see a lot of cities are now having challenges managing those communities. Uh, things like noise and public safety. You'll have complaints from your neighbors. It seems to do. Yeah, you know, this is affecting me, but uh, we do have some cities that have a lot of complaints of jazz, heavy traffic. Parking, the parking are almost blocked. You walk in the driveway, that's your own city council. That's unhealthy. Uh, some of these houses uh, in some cities are being party houses. Training gets in and out. You can just maybe watch the VCs and these. Um, and that wasn't allowed using and sometimes things that just aren't pleasant for your community. Um, I was on Main Street earlier and I love the, the cute little, it's very downtown, the express. So sometimes those, that those communities, those assorted downtown communities, we kind of. Um, it's all good and manage some local housing. Uh, and these things again, these phone calls are driving into somebody's. You know, if you're dedicated to plans for those calls to come, you may even get a call there and no, there's a house. Be a drain or be of your sources, your sheriff or police may have to be dispatched to take care of someone. So again, that's just kind of a constant word, but a lot of cities are seeing. Um, again, the short term rental communities are growing. That has not stopped yet. We've monitored these listings on Airbnb and uh, VRBO for a few years now. It has yet to plateau. They're still steady. Um, so far since 2011, there is a 500% growth in the market of the listing. The average daily rates, so you're 1.99 a night, even those rates are up 24.7% since 2020. There are now over 125 platforms where these operators are able to list their property, uh, market their property, if you will. You'll probably know Airbnb, VRBO, some of the vehicles that have the pretty cars, well, see, there's 125 places and. Um, the, the complaints like we were just talking about, there's an increase of over 200% uh, since 2021 in the complaints. Um, and global markets have seen their STRs outperform their hotels. So that's, you know, some of the, the trends that you are probably seeing here in Smithville. A little bit about Avenue. Um, we have been in the, the industry for over 40 years. We are dedicated to state and local government. Uh, we have, uh, actually, I think it's closer to 3,000 state local customers now across the country. Um, you may have a hard time really seeing that well, but the blue dots on that map to the right represent our client locations. Uh, the red dots represent our physical offices. We do have over 700 employees across the country and we have implemented more than 400 tax administration systems on some board. Um. And we are the leading provider of revenue administration, managed services such as IT, cybersecurity, revenue enhancement, revenue, revenue, public solutions. And we have been actually now a fifth year growth in April. So in this industry for 40 years, we have done SDR for 40 years. We have had, uh, obviously a variety of services in the office, state, local government. These are few of the tax sites that we have focused on. Um, this includes administration of those taxes, fees, permits, things like that, and also compliance audit and occupancy. And I always have to, to highlight this sugary sweet beverage tax, California thing, but I mean, I'll show you. There's no shortage of taxes across the country. So we, we did have experience in all of those. And now for a minute, let's talk about compliance framework, governance, the cycle of governance, because um, there are a lot of vendors that offer you software and that you can have data. So they can give you a list of the properties and listing all that Airbnb's and VRBO's. Uh, it'll have the, the address, it'll have the owner's information. And you know, it's, it's very similar to what we do. Nothing's just the light blue section on this. Compliance and monitoring, that's your data. So you can get the data and, you know, it's not easy to get, but you can, you can find a variety of vendors to provide you the data. The rest of the circle is what you do with that data after you have it. So if you had a list on your desk right now of all the properties in Smithville that are your short term rentals, what do you do? You gotta go out, uh, administration and support is, is where you go out and do your outreach in your community. Avenue offers your staff in that fully assumes the responsibility of your administration. So we'll contact all of your SDR operators and let them know what ordinances applied to them, the taxes that are living on, what their responsibilities are to operate their business. In Smithville, because that's where the SDR is, it's a small business essentially. Um, we offer the online file and pay portal. For convenience for your operators to be able to go on, submit their home, so on, you can see the bar, um, submit their payment on. It's, it's very convenient. Follow up on all of the delinquencies. So once we build your tax rule, everybody's registered. This year in the perfect world, some people are still going to miss them on, it'll be late a few days. And so our staff actually does the outreach for that. Um, to remind them that their payment is due, assist them in remitting that payment if they need to. Or about payment arrangements for the city, if that's something that you entertain. And then when they do remit the, um, the money, we help to calculate the penalties that may have a group. So outside of the administration into the R section, you're following. Uh, again, once you have your data uh, in a light blue and red, you've built your tax rule, you've got your books identified and registered and remitted. Um, you will still have some, some uh, non-compliance. And so you may have um, some properties that you see some filing anomalies that you want to go do compliance audit. It's very important, it's a very important part of governance, um, to go and um, send letters to those folks, request a record review. And just make sure that what they remitted was accurate. Compliance audit is very important with any tax type action. Um, the discovery recovery is the mechanism to stick the revenue in the door. Then the great section was the reporting and analytics, uh, which again is a vital piece of your whole cycle of governance, because when you come to these meetings, uh, you pass your ordinance, you've got your programs. So the council didn't want to know an update, but what are we expecting from property? So that's our forecast. What are our trends? What are our top parameters? So inside our portal, we have a very robust reporting and analytics tool that the city collects as due to. So that's kind of our idea of what is good governance, looks like, short term rentals. But for a minute, let's talk about Smithville. Um, is that a point right? I have uh, built out the boundaries to, to the city boundaries. Um, and inside of the map, all that I keep out, so you see the areas in the red have more than city uh, properties listing on sites like Airbnb and VRBO. We show in our passive monitoring that there are 43 properties actively listing in Smithville, Texas. The average nightly rate of those properties is $200,000.71. The estimated annual revenue for these properties based at a 50 to 75% occupancy range. So if those properties are renting active year until three quarters of the year, the tax implications on that is between 104,000 and 157,000 dollars a year. Wow. I'm going to let this begin in a minute. A lot of times when I show folks this data, uh, they, they kind of have a reaction of wow, I didn't realize I had reached my face. Or wow, I didn't realize that because of the tax uh, losses that I was, you know, the big add-on revenue that I could deal with occupancy tax. They don't realize how big the program is. Do you have my mouse still working right?
Did you run those numbers at about 25%? I know you ran those numbers here in 50 to 75% occupancy.
You said did higher.
Yeah, where did you get them? Uh, the 50 to 75%?
So actually, in our system, we, inside our software, we can tell the occupancy percentage as an average. And your average was 78%. So I tend to be to the more conservative side of things. So I did the 50 to 75% range. But if you'd like to see just for uh, for the numbers sake, I can definitely run a percentage. Can't do that in my head right now, which I wish I was at somewhere. So we'll talk for a minute about one of our clients, College Station, Texas. And I'm sure you're familiar with College Station. I don't want to get too far from here. Um, Mr. Gus is the administrator there. He came to us with the same problem. You know, he said, I'm trying to get an ordinance in place. I've got all these folks coming and renting these properties in College Station, have no governance in that. Like I think I'm missing out on revenue. I'm having visitors that are coming to College Station games or consider getting school, staying in SDRs, that have no regulations. And they have experiences. They leave their unhappy. That translates to, that's their memory of College Station, if they've had experiences in SDR. So he built out some nice licenses, uh, that included safety inspections and signage and just various things. They kind of brought the SDRs to the center of workouts. And we assisted in that. Um, he did identification, uh, registration, he got his tax rule built out. And this slide is dated, but it's just a while ago. I did a webinar of ours and he opened up, he sent to, to date since over $450,000 at least. Um, it, it, that increased occupancy taxes funds. We held 400, um, non-licensed short term rentals in our first four months of work there. 145 newly licensed SDRs. So he's kind of like our poster child for, he kind of started out at the stage one. He had some data. He didn't really know what to do with it. And then when we came in and started supporting him in his administration, the, the results were just astonishing. It made a big difference in College Station. So. So I told you all that there's more than a top two or three uh, platforms. This is just a strange chunk of a handful of the 80 plus websites that we do data screening on. So it's more than Airbnb and VRBO. Um, I, I like to show this because some cities uh, think, well, you know, I can do, I forget the name of the agreement, but there's a partnership that you can get with Airbnb, um, where when they process the transactions for the operators, they'll collect the local sales. So I can get statistics and read that over to you. Um, the problem is Airbnb is just one of over 100 of these people. So we monitor 80 plus websites. Um, another thing, another reason I like to show this is because um, if, if someone renting on Airbnb and they don't, they want to stop the radar, they don't want the city coming after them for, you know, being an SDR, we use a balance tool. So I always like in some cities, it's not a good solution just to do a contract with Airbnb. You're going to miss a lot of activity on the other sites. And the level of data that you get from Airbnb is um, skeletal. It's just uh, kind of a, a dumbbell remedy, but you'll have these bring up the mentor backup um, to what those dollars uh, represent, what properties they have tied to and things like that. So it is important to find a vendor that can offer very close to this. So we'll talk for a minute about our 24 seven hotline. If you can just ramble too long as a Louisiana girl, just give me a sign to wrap. We have a 24 seven hotline that is um, really been a game changer for a lot of our city clients. Um, in ordinances that we've seen in some of our clients that actually have uh, built into their ordinance cover three strides throughout. These are mainly cities with bigger SDR populations, maybe some party houses, you know, recurring problems. So um, if you have that three stretch route in your ordinance, how do you track that? How do you know whether there's something trying to, if you're sure I didn't say any connections? What we do is with this 24 seven hotline, we um, you put the number on your website, we do all of your phones. So if anybody has a complaint, if anybody wants to call our folder, there's an SDR next door, whatever the situation is. Our um, training staff will take all those calls. If there is an issue to be resolved, such as my uh, neighbor has a lot of music playing at this short term rental property, it's 2:00 AM, why do you shut the door? Brooks down. You don't have to call, again, where sheriffs or your police, our team has the information for the property owner, their contact information. And we can reach out with them, have them contact their renter and have them remove it down or move the car out of the neighbor's driveway or trash. Uh, and all of those calls are logged in a system and uh, associated and tied to the property records for that address. So if you pull up a particular property address, you see, well, this is the fifth time we've had a call this month about this property, then it may be time to take action. But if those calls and those complaints are just never really bull, so we get it, it's really hard to track. So it's nice to have more uh, workplace. Education and accountability. Uh, but we do take um, very seriously how we communicate with your constituents and with your social workers. It's very important to us, um, because most people, the vast majority of people who are taxpayers, if they are in non-compliance, it's not because they're trying to obey law or they're trying to, to get out of being a tax. A lot of them just don't understand what's required of them. This is a new business for them. They don't know about how to get registered or how to go print your taxes, how you calculate them. So we um, take a lot of time in training and educating your operators. Um, so that would be forward. They're, they, they get in compliance and they stay in compliance. So that's really valuable to the city. So again, my recommendation to the city is our full service administration offering. So it's mainly what we've talked about today, but we own the governance wheel, all of those pieces that are possible to fit together and that's our full service administration. So we will do all of your community outreach. We'll set it for taxpayer accounts. We work with the city to customize your occupancy tax form to the fields that needs to be your particular tax rates, your interest rates, whatever is new to me. Um, we do all the form and naming processing. So when your uh, SDR operators go online, they're a bit of a monthly for in the money, avenue process that through our own credit card processor. We reconcile the money to the tax return. We update the property record in the system to show them as current and paid. And we remain the money and all of that has to be pitched to the city. If you have nothing to do, your program is running. Um, so again, we talked about the reconciliation, compliance. Um, but again, as I mentioned earlier, if you have the ongoing finalists, if you have someone behind, they'll get that permit reading. Anything that your staff would do to, to help the program run better is essentially outsource to our team. And then on the backside, the very last, you'll have your government services. So the city will have a portal to log into. You can search uh, taxpayer, you can search a property insurance and a variety of ways to pull up a property. Um, and you can check if a person has their license. If, if we've identified them, they cannot find what state of compliance they're in. If we've sent letters to that property, um, it's essentially kind of the backdoor to view everything that Avenue is doing in the administration program. You also have the ability, again, reporting and analytics is important. So maybe before a council meeting, you may want to go in and, and run some reports and kind of show what your program is looking like. So you have the ability to do that in our government services. And the benefits of the full administration, obviously taxpayer convenience. We've done this. You don't have to re-invent the way we do this in some cities already. Um, it's very convenient for the taxpayers to be able to go online and have a very um, user friendly, violent pay portal. Uh, the 24 seven hotline, access to our staff, that's super important. And then when they file online, the forms are, um, a lot of the filters are populated fields. So they may enter their gross receipts and it will automatically calculate the tax due, the interest due, the penalty. So your constituents are not pulling their calculator out. I don't math well and it would be mess. So anyways, it's just helpful, just online in general, that it, it reduces a lot of taxpayer care. So the audit and discovery and recovery, um, again, another very important piece of what we do. We have a dedicated team of auditors and actually they're in Houston. Um, and they spend a lot of time working with the city to determine the best audit candidates, send letters to those audit candidates, do reach out, uh, to request the property records. Uh, they examine and verify the records. We have, everyone on our team is either um, a degree candidate, a CPA or a certified tax administrator. Uh, we have some folks on our team that have been on for over 20 years. So the experience is very vast. And then we provide reports back to the city for any deficiencies that we found, so that you can take up the proper assessment procedures. And again, education and outreach, we want to be sure that every taxpayer leaves their audit feeling like that was healthy and helpful. They're more educated than, than what I said. Because I always like to say this, I was actually an auditor for about a decade and um, the benefits or the, the revenue associated with compliance will always outweigh the revenue. Compliance is just for that. So discovery and recovery, um, so when you standard program off, you will have folks that have been operating that is not necessarily compliant or, or uh, whatever the statutory requirements are here. And we're able to go back, different from a compliance audit, we're able to contact those taxpayers and say, you look. Um, in the last two years, you've subject to our, as we have heard from you, we show that you were operating. And it kind of gives them the ability to self-report and say, yeah, you know, I'm on a base, there's what I owe. And, and we just, we get that background and it's uh, very, very taxpayer proof. Reporting. They'll be detailed in your left-hand painting. So yes, we're, we're having, we're going to hold that report. But in addition to that, we have the ability to formulate available customer reports as you may need for certain, um, you know, purposes within the city. So. Visual, some of the reports look like you're running them in the, that was a small dashboard. Very blurry that you can see there's all the filters there and there are ways to run the reports and you get a score that you can give. And the next one to improve it some file that we can. I'll leave it up to Mr. Robert if I actually jump with the software.
Oh, that's it.
There are any questions or are absolutely any questions? Do you have any questions or are you kind of leaving any questions? So I'll tell you what the demo of the software would publish. Inside the system, you know, we talk about building the property reference and giving you a central pool of all of your properties. So typically I just go in, I pull up a demo property and I show you the things like, we have the address of the property, we have the owner's name, if there's a management company. So what I like to accomplish is just showing you the level of detail that we, our analytics staff, attaches to every property record, screenshots, links, photographs. So that, you know, it's not the greatest, fine, but just in case it was needed to go to court, it's defendable, fully defendable on paper. So that would be what I would put in the demo. So if you wanted to see the level of detail and kind of what the dashboard looks like, I think that's what I'd be doing. So I don't want to make that decision.
Question, how many cities with populations less than 5,000?
So actually, the majority, I would say, I'll talk about Texas specifically. Probably 90% of our Texas clients are less than 5,000. I would say 80% of them are less than 1,000.
So you pulled College Station and I think you showed 100 increase. Obviously, College Station is much larger and it's a major person there. How would you compare what you know now about Smithville? Because I'm assuming that there's a ton of other people in the city. What is your sense? You've got 43 or so properties divided by 85 with your scrape or your search. What would your expectation be for the number?
So it's really hard to determine that. So the data that I gave you today is from our passive monitoring. So we haven't had an analytics to go in and really, on a day-to-day, we do that. See, you think how you sometimes. There are typically some duplications because some folks will list across platforms. They may have their property on Airbnb and VRBO at the same time. So once we de-duplicate, we can see that it generally shave 10% off of your numbers. But then when they actually go in and run the deep analytics on your population, the numbers typically grow. So the reason I leave it at passive monitoring is that those two things. Well, this point is fairly accurate.
So I don't know. I haven't really worked closely, but I'm wondering. Is there any way to review it, tell her now, even if it's just what, how many of those points something are on Airbnb or VRBO?
Yes, sir. I don't think I have that data in this presentation, but we did run that. And you're very, very heavy on Airbnb. I have a photograph. I would just remember visually, it's probably 80, 90% Airbnb.
So I feel like there'd be, and let's just say we had 50 properties. I'm just going to put a number up there. 80% of them are on Airbnb, which also already has the service. Talking about potentially 10 properties that would be incrementally, potentially incrementally added to the roster. And that assumes all 10 of those weren't voluntarily compliant. That appear successful.
It is a fair assessment, Matt. We'd like to just complement that with, do you have a tax roll with the properties on Airbnb where you have them identified? You have their addresses and you have maybe histories associated with the property?
I don't know the answer to that, but I do know that if you were the one that said that you expect 80% of them are already in Airbnb. So I'm assuming that the city has a record of their mind, those 80% are they're paying to the city. Is there, is there a situation in which a property handled by Airbnb would not be submitting the payments to the city?
I don't know what agreement you have with Airbnb or what that relationship looks like. I wasn't even aware that you had, or you didn't say there is.
I thought you said, and I'm, and it is Airbnb already has that built into their services and they provide.
No, sir. I don't know what the city has in place, but.
It's not the city.
So Airbnb does offer some cities some type of agreement where they say, they don't automatically do it. But if they enter an agreement with the city and the city says, yes, I want you to collect the local sales department, I need to see it. So we're limited to being.
Yeah, and I think it's important certainly for me personally, that's true. I'm sure Janice will agree. We have a property, my wife has, is only one week and we just started doing it. We have it on the market. So while it's on the market, we started to do it. And if Janice has a property, so full disclosure here, we do. Experimenting. So I know I'm not. I'm just trying, and I think it's important to separate, for me anyway, there's two things that were potentially, you know, tonight with short-term rental. One is regulation of short-term rentals, which is something really totally different than what you're talking about. Even though you may have some services, though, hotlines and auditing to feed into more of mail, your regulations. The other issue is orders and regulations for. Your expertise to carry those. I just want, also, my contention is that this town doesn't have the best of my knowledge. And I've checked with the home department. We don't have, certainly not a pervasive problem with the types of activities that you described. I understand why you do that as part of your presentation, not all the details of the best thing. Yet we don't typically have, at least on our board, whereas at least Chief Board, we have those. I'd be concerned when we get to the part where we talk about licenses and regulation that we're being launched or something, that's not a problem. And I want to be careful, that's not your deal, that's for later discussion. But to the extent you can share with us, small towns under 1,000, do they have pervasive problems like you described at the outset of your?
So I don't want to pack and then advise you on your ordinance that I hear in the process of that. Well, I know. So whatever you end up with in your ordinance, we have the ability to support that. So, but we do have, and I guess it depends on where the town is located. So if you can think about Smithville way, a little bit different than College Station or where it is.
My point is, I don't want you to feel like you're being asked to pile up a trade fiction. You deal with a lot of towns that have less than 1,000 people by your own admission.
We do.
So and you have as part of your presentation, all of these potential negative activities associated with short-term rentals. So given the combination of those, in your experience, do you see those clients that have less than 1,000 population having these types of problems in a material way?
Well, again, and I'm not trying to avoid your question, but it does, it does matter, the location of, you know, some old beach may have more.
It must be less than 1,000.
There's lakefront properties, waterfront properties and things like that. So I mean, to answer your question, we do see folks have the struggles in various volumes. We're just able to offer a solution, even if you just have one call a year or one problem a year. Not saying that all SDRs are problematic. I actually am a fan of SDRs because I think they promote wealth in the community. I think it's a wonderful thing. So we're not trying to say that everybody has those bad players, but if you do.
I apologize. I didn't want, I didn't want you to feel like you're being an habitual advisor. You just stated that you deal with a lot of clients that are similar in profile to us population. I was just curious as to whether you have seen your experience. But to offer that service, I would say, oh yeah, all those towns have parties and drinking and parking lots. I just wondered what your opinion was about how pervasive those problems are.
Yeah, we do see it. So in the smaller towns, probably you have violations. You have trash, like, you know, trash is not in the right place for pickup. Some of the big things we see driving through our hotline, those smaller towns, I mean, towns even smaller than Smithville, are folks that want to say, look, I think there's an SDR next to me. I don't think they're registered. Can you check them out? Things like that. So it's not always something that is a negative activity as much as just, you know, having a centralized place where one can call for anything.
Well, I've got a question for Robert. Mom, you did a pass, just your heat map so great. How many, how many do we have registered right now?
And our books have a dozen. And that was, we have no contract with any entity, Airbnb, VRBO. This is just my staff going and trying to figure out who's doing what where. And even that effort is somewhat Herculean. But that emphasis actually helped us raise the hot tax revenue year-over-year from the 20,000 numbers to the 44,000 we, we achieved last year. So I see this as a real opportunity to take advantage of those folks who are renting, has run terminals. And like she said, it's 105 to 120, something like that. Unable.
Janice's question, so we have 12 or so on our books. We have estimated 8%, that's pretty to be there. Eight, presumably most of that on our contract. Some shit, suspect it's large. So as you get a check, do you cross-reference it to make sure that it's coming from someone that's already on Airbnb?
We do not get checks from Airbnb.
And you get a check from anyone.
We, it's.
Just in that, you only get checks from 12 people?
Yes.
You only have 12 people out of 47 that are paying to us?
And it's the individual coming in and paying out of their pocket, not any other entity paying.
And so there's a possibility that some of us are going to be free or. Free in. You said it might be.
I would think that it's close to accurate, if not conservative.
Yeah, so there might be more. So there is 30 or 40 island properties that are not being, that are not paying the taxes.
And the 12 that we do have also have been practice hotels. So we don't have a handle on short-term rental. That's why I think the service is, is pretty different.
Man, the question was at hand was if we needed to see the compliance. I don't think we did. I'll ask the question to see if someone hold that by, or we don't watch that.
No, I wonder, no. I have some chat questions. I feel you've given us enough information to ask the question.
Yes. And then my suggestion is a lot more detail. Sure, I don't understand that. So open to any questions.
Yeah, we had a couple of people that were going to speak, so I want to be respectful. At that time, they're still here now.
There may be a lot of trouble there. He's going to have some more.
So I'll let you know that. Also, we're here with the council and the mayor and the city. Very knowledgeable, we see a contact as, you know, within our ETJ, but we don't have. Just want to let you know that. So I'd be curious, let's just talk. Maybe just expand the map to ETJ, which is a hub. But we don't have enforcement, so.
And I handle Robert on, because maybe like again, this is a proposal. Certainly help us get our moves around it. But right now, to the extent that we are administering the program, we have a number that's costing us. So we kind of, almost as a great segue, Randy, we can continue.
This is just a visual of what the online product scan through, if you all have this. On here, this is what. Throw a question, sorry about. You all, you care about issues. So there are two tiers of service. Tier one is lower cost because all of that sum is the data. So if you're ever legal clients, well, that first property talk about where you have access to the property data, the address, the other information, that's where the city staff will continue to run the program, do the outreach, take the payments on the claim, option one is your data. Option two is our full service administration. I don't want to talk that out tonight. It's typically the most beneficial and cost-effective for the city. So the cost for that is typically $255 per property per year. You do have a minimal pricing, so we have to at least bill $15,000 per year. So you guys call them in our minimum pricing. So you're covered to up to 60 properties with the $15,000. And again, we have not seen the group slide off, so I do expect you all to, if you have. I was able to reduce the one-time setup fee for either options, typically $5,000. And I got the executive leadership team to bring that down to $2,000. Did you guys already have a relationship with Avenue? So I was just trying to negotiate that down. So for year one, or option two, full service is $17,000. And subsequently, the year would just be the $15,000 because the setup fee is only $1,000. And we knew where the setup fee up into monthly, I will hit it across the year.
So Robert, that compares to what we're currently collecting on the, if we were to collect the 43, what's the net here?
But that would be a definite positive cash flow, a return on your investment. If you're, if you're, if you're paying $17,000, you're going to get back 100, that's pretty good.
But are we, the current number is 40,000? And that's collecting 44,000 from 12 properties that we know. Hotels, that practice, special term. Triple that, we get over on the week. And then the cost is 17 to administer.
Correct. I do want you to know that our, our relationship goes back about four or five years whereby we have a sales and use tax agreement with Avenue Insights. They have a platform that you can monitor your, your data. And that's 2,500 a year. And after using it for two or three years, I have decided that it's not really worth 2,500 because I can't share the data. The contractor will not allow you to share who your top 25 taxpayers are. A contract otherwise dictates that if Avenue Insight finds a taxpayer who's not paying sales tax, they get 30% of whatever sales tax that they owe. I have a sprint here that, what they would put a chart to, but I'll give you. And we're not talking about a lot of money, but this revenue now gets put on the tax rolls. In 2020, we recovered $848, $2021, $642, $2020. So they're monitoring to make sure people are paying their sales tax. I would like to drop, talk to Randy and have you about this. We're going to drop the $2,500 in, in, in cost to be able to print this chart that only I can see.
Great. And I just want to expand on that a little if I can.
Sure.
The sales tax disallocation services that we already offer, so just to clarify what that is. We get the data from the controller and we have a team of accountants that run the data and make sure that everyone that should have reported sales tax into Smithville, they didn't. They didn't report that into the neighborhood, city, branch, from wherever. So the money that we've held for you previously is money that went to the home jurisdiction. But it's straight up from the Smithville. So in some disallocation service, we find those revenues, we reallocate them to Smithville. We do that on straight contingency. So I want to rate, there's no upfront fee, it's a straight contingency fee arrangement, 30%.
When you write a contract, what are the duration of the contract or the termination rates?
So we typically do three-year contracts with two optional renewal periods. So a three, two, and total of five. The last two, obviously, are optional renewals. And then terms for.
Termination.
Termination. We typically do not have terminal convenience, but we do have terminal costs. And so we can detail those to you in the DTC.
So if you did the, if you did the tier two, you're talking about 17 times three and a one-time $2,000. Now that 17 would go higher if you exceeded the 60. But if you stayed under that 60 threshold, it'd be $17,000 a year, three years.
Yes, sir. Let me just crunch it. And $70,000 is just for year one because that includes the $2,000 setup on years two and later is only $15,000.
Okay. So 17, 15, 15. Okay. And then anytime during that period, even the primary period, if we run happy, we can terminate. We just be liable to lose the balance.
Not even that. I mean, if you, if you wanted to terminate, you had a reason, you had a service.
What's your stakes, Cami?
Well, again, we don't do terminal convenience, just, you know.
That's what I'm saying. So we would know the balance of three years, but we could still terminate.
Yeah. So what I was going to say was if you had a reason that you wanted to terminate, whatever that reason is, you send us a letter, not what we own this, but I'm pretty sure that there's language in the contract that says within, if you send us a letter, 90 days notice, you know, it's just in your basic termination. You're not, you won't go to balance of the contract. We just need a termination notice, like you made, 30, about three months.
And the reason, I wouldn't presume that it was because you weren't good at the job. What if the city got to a point where they decided they wanted to do it internally? And that's obviously not where we are today. But if we decided a year and a half from now that we wanted to do it ourselves, the optionality to convert and to terminate without having a penalty is just something that I want to know how you're at.
So again, I think it's a 90-day notice, which is three months. We don't hold anybody hostage. Honestly, if you don't get terminal convenience, if you're not happy, you're not at home. The other thing that we do see some cities doing is in the beginning, you know, you, I kind of see you in stage one to work under ordinance. See you in stage one, you're working under ordinance, trying to stand up program. You may want to start out with option one, I mean, with, um, option to the full service, you may want to do that for twelve or twenty four months, and then you. At that point, they say, well, you know what, we haven't stood up to running. Now we just want to do maybe just software sale back to this lesser version. Moving forward, we'll just do option one on years three and four, and it's very scalable, so whatever is best for the city, we're going to probably.
The council on James, isn't that my path, Robert, that is huge impact, I mean, if you're, you're collecting right now forty four. And if you, me collecting twelve, almost about a dollar that we collected last year. So forty four thousand, and so if you take it from forty four, just below end of your estimated range, to a hundred and twenty. You know, you're picking out sixty, seventy thousand dollars.
Allow us at seventeen thousand, grow up to sixty, so that's a clear level, so we're really going to, we're actually sixty. And all right now, net evidence is seventeen, you are correct, is that? That hot tax currently, we send that to the chamber?
That's correct. I do want to mention one more service that Randy didn't touch upon, but I think is important. I, I also want to kind of go back and kind of, how do we get where we are today, with short term rental ordinance that I've sent you folks. Uh, a year and a half ago, Joanna Oregon led a task force or, or the effort to try to, to. Uh, evaluate the, the issues, the problems that come up with the ordinance. Uh, she had a strong man ordinance that was in turn reviewed and modified by our staff and sent adjacent for reforming. Since then, I've found out that Avenue Insights does that service, they've actually done in Texas. Fifteen short term rental ordinances for other municipalities. I've sent Randy and her team a copy of the short term rental. Ordinance draft, and they're going to scrub it, take a look, and put best known methods. And tailor it to our use as part of the seventy thousand. So we may not be getting into the short term rental conversation ordinance tonight, because I think there's more work that needs to be done. But that is included in the service, correct?
Yes, sir, our, our specialist, I think he has the evidence in hand, and I spoke with him tonight, so he's. Decided to dig in and help me there, and it's not just going to be, um, you know. Given your reputation, a new problem, want to spend some time with the city to find out what your goals are, because city to city, the goals may vary. Uh, for the rents, they have a party problem, they want to with their ass, you may, you just may want to. Um, worry with, and people are certainly appreciating revenue, so we need to figure out what your goals are, if we can offer suggestions to like. Because we've seen other cities that help them affect those goals.
Should we use the hot tax off energy? I don't know that answer. Thanks, so.
I will tell you that we do have some. Some of the state we're going to try to get the. Um, but we believe that it does allow you to take only one percent of your collections to dedicate towards your administration of your. But full ad review and maybe have his, his opinion on that in a while during.
Say probably.
We might be able to get seventeen thousand out of potential two hundred thousand, maybe they might be able to like.
Council, any more questions for Miss Randy?
You're done, okay.
Your presentation, thank you.
Yeah. You can, you can close out of it, yeah, you can close out of it.
We do have a, a direct presence. But that, so Robert, this is a twenty five hundred dollars you're paying for paying for. The data platform, which I don't think we need for, for sales. So you don't have a copy of that yet. The action that you do to, to rise it, and we go forward would be to work with Avenue Insights to come up with a contract and then present it. The council would be of your consideration.
And then later, then you go back and take. You have to. And so there's some action.
So what I'm going to be for, that I need a, a brief. When we're talking about the fashion of possible action, you know, per real administration. I would like to have authorization to work with Avenue Insights to create the contract that you guys. Which in turn. Will allow us to work on the short term reward.
You want to hear the comments?
Yes, yes, I'm sure.
So we have Heather, what that has, um.
Hi, Heather Larson, I'm the owner of. I was finally enjoying the services that operate in the general sphere, I think, actually. Um, I just wanted to. Something being issued that were in between. I have not grumbled anything true, um, as far as short term rentals, um, I am for short term rentals. I am also for, uh, hotel occupancy tax being collected for the, and the funds going to promote tourism. All in all, it's very beneficial to town, um, I know. We hosted them in the speech, and they came to campus, um, they were here for their anniversary. It went out to eat forty different times, uh, fell among the food in our town, and said. They are very happy with the area of the food, um. So it's just kind of one of those stories that, that shows the benefit of. Uh, we host a lot of families in situations, and it's come for, uh, funeral. Weddings, um, birthday parties, nine year birthday celebrations, so really do think that. Short term rentals do have a reason to, also do think that. But shame on things, and made it a lot easier as a, as a rental company myself. From state. Maybe some of that, it's only out before, maybe in the chat, maybe in the mail, um. Hopefully, the thing of paying a little bit easier, uh, more revenues will come in, um, I didn't realize that. People were not paying for the occupancy tax. That's pretty appealing to me. I just wanted to. About there, and if you guys have any questions about operating short term rentals, or what it's like. Town, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Anything I ask, if I know where I'm getting these ordinances today. We just not make it, um, scary for people that have short term rentals. So I don't know if two hundred thousand dollars hopeful to get true, um, I guess. Hopefully, that would be very, it could be amazing, if that, especially in our town. But, um, if you have any internal question, uh, all right, one back. I just asked that the cost, uh, for permitting, all that will not be crazy expensive. Um, I do think the industry, I don't kind of regulate itself. Like, like, um, owners coming in and asking. Okay, so anyways, thank you, yeah, thank you all, very much.
Yes, I'll ask one other question. You alluded to the fact that you don't, you have an experience to have the problems that.
Right.
The thing is, can you share, one of the reasons I think we don't have some of those problems is, we don't just. It is, it's important to get your natural difference between a qualification or a. In your personal experience, what is a typical problem?
It, honestly, everybody, um, I think it's not so much you is staying, it's more of. What regulation. On your wedding, people that are coming. And sometimes happen, and it's more of how quickly do you respond to the issue, right, a lot, a lot of it. I had to get on somebody in a little bit too loud. You already have white cards in place. Um, and yeah, so I have had to address a, for city ordinances, yeah. Like, sorry, but, um, really, those are probably the biggest, biggest impacts, um. And so I don't really know, I think, I think our town being so planned, um, it really is. Uh, hosting like families and, um, ladies coming to our town, probably getting a job and a tea for. Um, it is like, not a polished town, they're, they're coming to tell me a story and. You know, we have the game all day, and then they're coming back to town to continue out the party. And that's another thing with ordinances as well, I'm just, that, um, I don't agree with ordinance being in place, but I just. Be so strict to be comparative to those in our location. And just kind of really think about our town, and who we host, and who actually comes to the mayor. As well, and people being placed that this is a job. Town are giving me and. Thank you all.
I'll take two young ladies in the audience, Ms. Adina, Ms. Fran, y'all have anything to add?
Not on this one.
Oh, wait, if it has someone else signed up to speak, but I, if it has someone else signed up to speak, I thought it was, don't leave, I need.
Gina, Je- uh, Jeannie Rafferty was signed up, but.
She didn't answer me back.
She, she, I didn't realize there was more long term rentals, so she was misinformed on the agenda.
Just please introduce yourself and, and say why, why you're here. Your eye opening.
Sure, I have a job at Bankett, I'm a school board. I don't do anything on this, so this is just strictly as a school, but we're here to talk about long term. Issues, and a teacher out of the deep, so really, that's nothing to do with. Or jobs, so you see us back here. So that, that, that's where you're down the side.
Thank you, Howard, for coming though. Uh, do we have any plans?
Um, not, not on, uh, that one. On the ordinance, on the short term ordinance, I have Lee Killor, but.
Ms. Adina, just come and lighten this.
So I got everybody in the room, so I want to introduce myself as what, what even the name of it. It was born two old mates in Texas, and they get very. I'm position, and I work for you, if you want to master up county. And I work for you, we manage the hotel occupancy tax, um, that is collected on behalf of the. And we have a bifurcated, um. And property inside a city limit or in T J, it reflects on behalf of the county point seven five percent. Uh, if it's outside of a city limit or outside of the T J, then it's seven percent that's collected. I've tried to train myself, and I want you guys to hear the difference between paid and collected. Because these properties don't actually pay it out of their purse. They bill the visitor that comes to our town for the appropriate tax amount. To me, that's a big difference in how that's presented, we're not charging the properties, it's, you know, you. You rent a hotel room, and it's a hundred fifty dollars, and when you go, you're ready to leave, it's a hundred and seventy nine dollars. There's all these little line items in the bottom, that's one of those, it's going to be hotel occupancy tax for whichever town that you're. Um, staying in, um, we feel that the hotel occupancy tax is a wonderful tool. To increase tourism, uh, as an economic driver, I think a lot of our small businesses. Really appreciate the fact that there's a band of, uh, group of people that. I'll answer your question. How appropriate, you know, with me, the county has just hired the service to be inspected. Because I totally agree that there's so many problems out there that do not know, they just. Have the star, and there are also people that hide. Uh, and, um, it's not fair to the properties that do like. Do not have us really work to try to make sure everybody's paying, collecting their fair share.
The county has hired someone to go out and do this discovery, so it could be redundant if we.
The, the county will share with you, the city has sent all the results that we. Um, so, as far as this category, um, we'll be a partner in that. Um, and that was one of the things when, when we went to the commissioner's court and asked them to allow the county to do this. Uh, that was one of the things that I made very clear, I wanted it shared with all of our city.
So, so what is, the ones that made, that answer your question, I think where you were going is. And it's, it's in your package.
Discovery is in your.
Yeah, discovery is one. Yeah, and I'm not trying to strip this down, I was just to be, that's like, the county's doing it.
Actually, I, we already work, um, together, we're in checks, and to make sure that we know who you guys know, and. And vice versa, and I, I do agree, I don't know if it's forty, that's, you know, it's hard to know what that number is. They estimate about four hundred properties in the county that are not, um.
Yeah.
Yes, to be, yet to be discovered.
Robert, you said earlier that, that you don't have enforcement, we have rights to ETJ, but no enforcement, what, what, what does that mean? That means you, the, the recommendation for a short term rental, it's, the fee would be a hundred dollars. To have a short term. And the enforcement of whatever ordinance that you put together, I can enforce it on the ETJ, only enforce it, sit down. But you could enforce the hot tax.
Noise, why they're.
Again, what I like about this service, the, the city staff, we've been trying to hunt this down over the past two years, Dan. I need someone to administer a service like.
And Robert, I would agree completely. Brandon and I have spent hours and hours and hours and hours trying to locate these properties. We don't have the capability that the third party would have to go, like, scrape, they have. Programs that they can plug in and tell them exactly what we all want to know. But if you go to Airbnb and try to find a property, the address won't be listed. Nor will the phone number be listed, and if you, granted, I've tried it all different ways, I've put three years out and tried to. Get them to talk to me, um, but Airbnb puts, um, the phone number. So, so it's, it's, they're very well hidden, and it's very difficult to discover them.
Hey Fran, I mean, Adina, sorry, I see. You too, I always do it to each other. So uh, you said the county's gonna pay for the discovery fees.
Yes.
And what what's that gonna cost the county? And that's gonna include the city too.
It includes any property that we feed with with your company.
So what what's any of?
It was a twenty-five hundred dollar fee starts and then fifty dollars per property. And you're gonna.
So it's in the same. You gotta, you gotta share that with the students.
No, they won't be charged to the cities. It's just the information.
The information you'll share.
Okay.
Would there, do you think that you would both find all the properties together or would you find someone with your service found someone? That she can scrape to have the software, would they do a better job?
Can't speak to that. The company that we hired is similar in the service that they provide. So it would, it would be the same type of discovery. I don't know exactly what programs they use and I don't even know exactly what programs the companies that were using. Um, but you know, relationships are important and I think it's very important when we try to collect. This opportunity that we presented in a way that isn't offensive to people who are trying to do this in my town. And I think that needs to be very carefully guarded, that's kind of one of the reasons why I've gone slowly. And uh, being more aggressive in this, um, trying to figure out a way to block to be the bad guy. But I, it's a tax, it's a tax, just like in South Texas, somebody said, I'm gonna pay for this. You know, we don't want them to do that, you know, so I think it's the same.
Adina, I appreciate you sharing your wisdom with us and I think that was important. Um, I still like the program you got presented, I think for us to have startup, it's important for us to. Have someone come in and rattle the leaf in a sense. We have this many short-term rentals here, so anyway, thank you for your wisdom.
So let's see, are we looking for action in terms of a motion to authorize property, continue negotiation? Including recommend you make this.
For the software to see a consideration. Bring back more information on the software.
No, let me clarify.
Thing we need is a motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate a draft contract, bring it to the next council, consideration possible. That.
Which will include the uh. Short-term. Say they 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 really like.
If they're decomped, they're not, or the separate motion just authorized you to negotiate a draft.
One more motion. The bottom. When you put permission out. I think we authorize the city manager to continue negotiation, but having included review recommendations for the short-term level ordinance. Second motion.
Okay, second. It is approved. Are you good? Are you good?
Okay.
I just want, I just want, I just want to make sure that that it's clear enough that. You're authorized to negotiate a draft. Contract. I know you included of reference to the予权限. Should that be treated separately? Are you gonna be prepared to bring it the same time, but it will not, yes, it's only part of the eleven one actually. It's already made value, but. I mean, I don't, I don't have a lot of people like it works great.
I need to be able to 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 hand an agreement, and as part of that agreement, that service. Will be addressed, the development of a short-term. Maybe not the short, the uh, sales and use packs. Portion of draft agreement, which I have here, that's why I don't have it, because I want to remove that. So get that taken care of, we're gonna document everything that was talked about here today, two thousand dollars. Seventeen thousand total, here's what you get, up to sixty short-term rental evaluations, administrations, compliance going forward, so. That's what I need. If they need you to name. Get that out. You pick that up, just. I need you to go look at the agenda item that says discussion on action on a possibly. Short-term rental administration.
I think we're, I think we're good, we don't need, yeah, we don't need it, we don't, Jason's saying, we don't even need an action at all, so I think we're good, we know. What direction, we're not approving any, anything right now as far as a short-term rental agreement or anything, so you don't need an action. We're just, they're just advising you to go back and get that agreed. Yes, yes. It's okay, she can get out, she can push it, yeah.
Item number four is presentation from Jason Ramo on short-term rental.
Okay, councilman, they're having.
I've got one.
So you missed the start of the presentation, but. I am really excited, and um, of course, you're hitting me in the sense for solve thousand taxes. And I've given them your draft, they're gonna take a look at it and find the best of all worlds. And we'll come back to the council every day with those recommendations, so. In my mind, recommending that um.
No action.
No action.
No action, no action for item number four. Number five, especially in possible action on short-term rental.
That would be the same, of course, if we were going to review the ordinance, then you would notify, yes, that will be approved, but we're not doing that now because we're postponing it. Do you have anyone who needs to speak?
I have Lee Killor, but if she doesn't want to, then, I mean, that's.
Okay, on to number six. Wait, no, what's wrong? But no, no. You said no.
What we're doing is just. Post upon the discussion of the short-term rental ordinance. And after the city manager has the opportunity, you can see. Do you need a motion to that, or are we?
We're good, yeah.
All right, on to number six, presentation from Jason Ramo on subdivision ordinance. Tell us your draft from Austin.
He was, he was great. I feel Gonzalez, he was a really good part. Um, and uh, I think I've done a lot better than. Okay. So um, this ordinance, of course, we have the others that were filed. Um, I want to say. And. And so an analogy I'll have is. What I think is, I completed draft, um, you know, open the auto. Of course. Um, as a sort of general matter, it was basically. Taking the existing ordinance, um, reorganizing it, um, re-qualifying it because the way it is. It's really confusing when I talk with city staff, page of the article four, section one. And supposed to say, well, this is the technical ten point oh one, point zero one. And so that that was part of it, is sort of qualifying it in line with our current. Um, competition. Um, so it's a honor exhibit A, thirty-two, section one, it's how second, you know, whatever, ten point zero one, point zero. Um. Then I I also sort of reorganized it, sort of become sort of generally specific. Uh, so you have sort of the first article, it's gonna do general things, where applies, uh, who applies to definitions. Um, and then it kind of goes through the various. Procedure of the back and the, they're all in sort of. Different kinds of flats, um, and then there's section on shooting, shooting provision, things like that, and then the very last item, the appearances. Um. The um. I kept, I guess, sort of the, trying to keep most of the meat that we had, there's a lot of things needed to be added. Procedure-wise, specifically, I had a lot of discussion about. Um, plans and plans will be different times, uh, because we really had sort of, you had essential or a concept plan. Um, preliminary plan, minor plan, final plan, but there's all kinds of amended plans, there's. Refiling without making, it's all qualified in um, chapter two twelve, because of the government code, and so those new sections pretty much may track that. Um, about, you know, it's just, it's just a lot easier when. Um, city staff and developers and ordinary property owners, the nays go to our ordinance. They, it basically tracks the state statute rather than, okay, here's what it says on our ordinance, what it says, she says, it's just right there. Um. And uh, it does add, so let's see. There's procedural, uh, procedural revisions pertain mostly to some legislation, the legislation back to nineteen. It started with all in the business, the shop lock, where once they submit the uh, application for flat, P N Z has thirty days. Act on it, and then y'all have thirty days um, to act on it, have P N Z does. Um, so those things, those things are incorporated, um, one of the the main features of that. Is a mandatory increase in bill meeting. Um, there's sort of a. Optional to bill meeting where the owner can come in, say, this is what I want to do. What are your goals? What do we need to have? Just kind of give them an overview of that option. The second meeting, they actually have one event where in before they submit anything, I mean, their final actual submission, two seats. Hotspots, there's an initiative review process that the city are gonna make sure that they have good everything. Um, and that way, then city staff actually submit that, follow with the city secretary, that starts the shop lock, P N Z then has thirty days. And the way to control that. Thirty-day shop lock is with this meeting, so they're not coming in submitting their flat five days before P N Z, and then all of a sudden it's automatically approved. Because P N Z had been that certain things, and we're not gonna. Days of of review before P N Z gets to look at it, the city. Look at it, make sure. Um, one thing to consider, and it's not in this ordinance, is the way that you govern. The stating between the P N Z meeting and the city council meeting, um, one of my other cities that I represent. They had a P N Z meeting was like Tuesday and city council Thursday, and so what I. We decided to do is actually take that P N Z meeting. After, like, switch the days, and so the P N Z would be on a Thursday and the city council would be. A month later, but on a Tuesday, so it was like eight days, to give that thirty-day window between the two meetings, as folks like said. Um, and that, that's gonna give, if there are issues with that, that's gonna give the applicant time between P N Z and city council. Possibly, you know, fix things or things to come back. So it's just, it's just something to think about, I would say in practice. Things are, as I've seen it work through my cities, is they're filing the the flat or or plan, whatever it is. And if it doesn't, if it's not a hundred percent up to code, by the time it's P N Z, my organization, P N Z is denied it. And it just has to keep going back to P N Z for its, I mean, they have to go, and then it moves on, and the city council never. Because it's just, there's this sort of automatic being approval, if no action is taken under this new. So that's, that's still different, yeah.
Uh, yeah, Jason, in our, in our practice, the key here, as being a gatekeeper for it, gets to planning and zoning council, is that administrative review. Where you create the checklist to make sure all of the things are dotted, these are crossed. And we have, and it's happening with developers, I don't know, we go back to the drawing board and this or that.
Yeah.
And so you don't start the shot. Right, that's what we're doing.
And and I found that that worked effectively, it had to work for y'all, um, it's just um, that now that that process is out. But if I'm in here, um, it may, I can't remember if we added that at the twenty nineteen or not, I can't remember.
I don't think so.
But it's in here.
Having been through the process when you did implement it, it was very effective, so I think it is working.
And and the thing, the thing to keep in mind, the other thing that this ordinance sets out and it tracks, uh. Textual ground, is that there's really only three things that P N Z and city council can do, either approve it. Disapprove it, or approve with admission. Um. When this legislation, so when that started in two thousand and eighteen. Uh, statute, this, there has been a minute, we'll talk about that again, um. That um, that statute's not super clear, uh, when it moves forward to city council, it says it'll move forward to city council. Once it's approved. But what I think was the condition, the statute doesn't say, I can say in practice, um, I would recommend in these, if it doesn't need code. It's not saying, well, we'll prove it if we fix X Y Z. My recommendation is disapprove it, deny it, maybe fix it and come back. Okay, um, and I think that should be the approach here because there's such a short. Time period between P N Z and and city council. Uh, but it's just something to kind of think about, have to be. You know, have to move forward and sort of use this process, which, again, the administrative part catches most of them. Um, but there's still some things that, you know, um, you know, the administrative view is, do you have all the stuff? Right, you got this report, do you have this, do you have that? And there's some of the technical specifications of, are your blocks long? You know, are your streets wide, you know, those kinds of things, so they're a little bit different, so sometimes, you know, what I've seen is, they'll come to P N Z. As administrative, they, like, all the drawings are there, all the studies are there, it's just that some things don't meet that. Right, they don't meet the requirement or whatever, and so um, P N Z will deny it, they fix it, and they. Then there's a whole process, but when they come back, it's called a response, and the, and the code, I call it an action response, it's just a. They did a very specific thing, um, and that had fifteen today shop clock. But again, to control that, there's administrative review before this. Um, so that's just um, some of those things, so you know, the procedural stuff, I think that's how they did. Um. And so on, I'm on a kind of the, I don't know, the next slide, I guess, we're talking about revision of the class, um, so what you have now. The current ordinance, except for plans, they're never gonna apply the. Um, and. What is revised is there's some additional information that's required. Civil, so traffic impact analysis is not required, pre-surveying is not required, some utility certification, I kept most of the things, I tried to. I did a little bit, um, I went through, you know, when some of the cities I represent require, other cities are. Fire, it's like, Bill, what's working for Smithville, and next one is the C max one Z, then just add sort of the new things that are sort of the new features. Traffic impact analysis, three surveys, those kinds of things, I did add a utility certification, um, as part of the process, just to make sure that that's. And the city, the city's general providers, so that should be a very straightforward. Um, the other revision is for final plats, um, right now, it looks like the. Uh, they get, they get recorded, by the developer, actively approval, and right now, the way I've devised it, they're only recorded. Um, after the construction, it's like, you can't read it. It doesn't get recorded, it's a city law, and it doesn't get recorded, it's all construction. Um, unless there's a law.
Yes. I mean, the, a lot of cities use the bond approach, that you have a lender and you need a recorded plat, does that in any way hinder them? Does that force them to have to do a bond in order to get their construction loan and be able to fund their, their development?
Yeah.
Chicken or anything?
Well, what I, what I'm seeing is that, um. For developments, like, say residential subdivisions. To me, I've adopted this in City of Albany, where in the city attorney, we did it like right in between twenty nineteen, right after the situation came out. And we allowed a bond by variance. I think that's maybe out of. And we allowed a bond by variance, I think that's maybe out of the way.
So, Robert, you know, when we did, let's just say you have a subdivision and it has estimated ten million dollars of infrastructure cost. We require a bond for twenty-five percent of that, or ten percent, what do we require during the project?
It has, in terms of performance warranty, and then it transfers to the city after two years, so. To my recollection, no one has ever bonded, I mean, has anyone ever actually done a bond with this?
And, and, and the reason that I bring this up, you know, Jason, you probably can't reach where I'm at. If you're a lender, five acres, seventy-five, sixty, you have a lender who is going to find the, as the infrastructure, the streets, the transit, the ten million, you know, technically not one. Lenders may very well require that plat to be recorded before they've advanced funds, and the title company may require it for the month of end dates against their draw up. But have you seen that in all of them?
What I, what I have seen is, you know, they didn't, you know, they may not be getting the traditional, whatever, and it's more of a whole project. Right, they start with broader, it's for the whole project, and then if they did an approved plat, great. But I haven't, I haven't seen any issue with recreation at all.
So, over there, you're the city manager, I mean, the city attorney.
Yes, right.
They, they don't approve the plat until the construction is
They're recorded with the plat.
They're not recorded with the plat until. And so there's been no issues with anyone not fully bonded out and still getting their construction loan?
Um, I think, maybe once somebody's requested a bond, and I think that was done, that was part of the, anyways. So I, I haven't seen it being an issue.
The only thing I would suggest is that we do a little research on that and make sure, I don't think that the insurance.
No, I haven't reported plat, all of that, I don't know, it's important not just to lend or profit touch the title. Well, I mean, so, so we, that would be true as sort of a resident, we're constructed only, you know, I mean, I, it won't be as rare for us. But you don't see that in the real estate development, where that's required, excuse me, that's required for a lender to say, yeah, we'll find this property. But finance is in place before they even buy it. That's, that's what I'm seeing.
I would just, I would just make sure.
Yeah, I can try to. Yeah, I haven't seen it being an issue, it is an issue, they just come and ask, they just put a bond.
Well, and that, that part of the goal with this is like in Florida, you have really, really strict bonding, they require you to not a hundred and twenty-five percent of this, that cost, they require you to do a maintenance for two years, you have to put up a performance bond, ensure that the work is done. Once the work's done, you have to be upended to that, two years to make sure that in two years, the improvements have generated more in part. And it's very difficult to get the bond, the reason I think it's a hundred and fifty-three. For, it can be for a ten million dollar performance bond, it can be a significant amount of money for developers, all beats down to affordability, particularly in housing. So I would just say, you know, it's not insignificant to think about that in terms of, you're always looking for, can we get more affordable housing? It isn't usually just one thing, it's a lot of little cuts, that is fifty thousand here, and two hundred thousand here, and a hundred fifty here, and next thing you know, you know your house is falling for. So I just wanted to, I wanted to just make sure that that's not going to be, it shouldn't be hard to check with the construction lenders and assess this question. You gotta, or an actual recording, or under, we've just been approved by, finished, recorded, made a decision.
Yeah, I don't know where the whole of the issue is. All right, so, um. Okay, and so that's, that's sort of, as I mentioned, there are some new plat types. Um, the main sort of two, so the vacant plat, the big plat, you'll see on that slide, this slide, talks about a development plat. So development plats are relatively new creature of the text of government code. Um, and then there's, there's certain, certain laws that, let's say they don't need it. Right, if, if an acre, we need to enter a new office, right, so we didn't need plat. But the city may still need, hey, we still may need some right away, we still need some utility infrastructure, uh, we may still need some things. And, and the way you kind of feel about getting those things we need is in this development process, the development platform. Which is, they file the development plat and said, this is what we're gonna do. And then they, y'all can approve it, doesn't actually get recorded, can, um, City of Albany does not, um, I think they should. But as a development plat, it says, they don't need, they don't need to cut this into pieces, right, they just want to develop it as it is. But it's important to know what they're gonna build, um, what's gonna be the traffic in there, what's gonna be, what are the tree situations look like, what is the, manage whatever. They can go through apartments before they start building, um, so, so they can't just, so they don't want to. The thing about the development plat, what we've seen, uh, in the lower years, is that the requirements are basically the same as the file plat. They just go ahead and do a file plat, that's better, uh, it will not be anything of a problem for the city. To have a video loss climate of top roll, so that we can record this everything, or look at everything. Um, and then again, if we need some right away, because the traffic, you know, it's sitting up, whatever, you know, a car or something like that. Say, it didn't work, we need to know that, and there needs to be additional, okay, that's the magic, it's to develop the city to do that. Uh, the other item is a conveyed plat, which is kind of, I think that's kind of a creature of, uh, our own creation. And at least, at least in Albany, I think you have a got, yeah, San Marcos, and it's when there's, uh, let's say a large, let's say somebody's got a hundred acres. They really only want to develop eighty of it, so that's only twenty kind of out of the land. Um, and then so we do a conveyance plat, then allow them to lease plat it, we know where everything is, again, if anyone can't, whatever, get those. Um, and also let those, um, if they just want to convey it from one person to the next, um, go ahead and do that. But it doesn't get them any, they can't, they can't build anything on it until they get, when it actually be final. And then there's vacating plats, which tracks the code, uh, the text of government code, repay it, new plat without vacating, and many. And right now, was, um, city has, um, they almost saw the vending plat or a limited plat, something like that. And it's sort of, those three things are, and we've fallen through that umbrella. Um, but this is, um, again, these, um, the ones I've had a tracker, the government code. That we know that exactly, there's some situations where you're allowed to, it takes a moment. So those, those are just put into our code, to that person just has to go look at our code and see what they can do. As opposed to going back and forth with text. And of course, stopping if y'all want to talk about it. The, there's three sort of new requirements, and these were things that were proposed by, uh, the day initially, when they said, hey, let's retitleify your subdivision order, these are three things that they recommended adding, that's a three thing that, I think they wanted to do eight thousand dollars just for the tree permit part. And I told Robert, like, I just drafted it a few years ago, you know, we'll just reform it. And so that's, that's what, that's what all three of these basically are, um, the traffic impact analysis. You know, requirement to look like, what kind of traffic is this gonna generate, what impact is it gonna have? Um, the sort of neat thing that, um, I included in this is that it's not just that the streets around that area that they need to look at, they need to look at the whole city. And say, if we're generating traffic from this development, is that gonna affect, what, how's that gonna affect the whole city? In some ways, in most, in a lot of cases, it's a bomb, but in some cases, it's a glue. And so part of that traffic impact analysis is, okay, what's the, uh, standard, like, what's the traffic like? Right now, the whole city, but what's the traffic gonna look like after you build this in the whole city? Um, and so, and then it's, and if that traffic gets worse, if people do what they're doing, then there's a called mitigation report. That can be turn lanes, that could be traffic signals, stop signs, ski bumps, whatever. In order to, uh, get that to the same, they call it a service level, uh, most of you have a service level C, and they just have to get it back to service level C, um, with the caveat that, that's already bad. They don't have to fix all the traffic problems, they just have to fix the traffic problem that they found. So if it's already bad, they just pay it forward, uh, but if it's good, they definitely.
These are the costs of. These analysis, is that borne by the applicant or is that
That's what I'm, that's nothing to be applicant, prepares and provides. Um, we're, we're going to, we're going to review it and, you know, it just, it just kind of depends on these RPs, or what's gonna be your cost. So I know, like, City of Albany, they have an outside engineering firm that review all of that, that cost is built into RPs. So that's, that's the, you start getting a bunch of these that have this really detailed engineering analysis. And, and the city needs to bring in a third party engineer to say, is this right, is this right? Um, you know, if it's an outfit, it's good, it's good engineering, then we'll build that cost in. So even if we have to refer some cost, the average. Um, same thing with the tree permits, in some way, tree permit, um, it protects certain trees.
Want to go back to the TIA, is there a trigger point that you would, if someone has a five, seven home subdivision, versus a fifty home subdivision, can we verify that if you're on?
Yeah, there's a, so there's one, there's like several kinds, yeah, that TIA, you can do, one's just called a worksheet. And so what you can do is you would have an engineer, their engineer has to certify, say, this, particularly development, I think that, I think the triggers like fifty acres of trees, something like that. I'll have to, I have to look through a little bit.
It's going to be covered first.
Yes, so if it's, if it's really less than that, seven home subdivision, then all they have to do is what's called a work A T I A, where are your base? Uh, now, if it's gonna be, if it's above that, and I think there are various tiers of that T I A. Um, if it's above that, then they're gonna have to do some engineering, they're gonna have to look at the whole city, those kinds of things. And so there's the worky T I A, there's sort of the mid-level T I A, there's this very, it's gonna be a video fact, it's customized, they sit down with the city and think about, hopefully, these are the things that we need to address and look at, and it's very simple to tell. Would that be your idea?
Yes, it does, thank you.
All right, um. So, um, I'm also with, um, tree protection, so there's some tree protection in there. Um, there's certain, you know, most trees, about six inches, that protected, for some certain species that are excluded, cedars, acarys, genoyar, there's a ton of things. Uh, and if someone wants to, you know, remove any of those protected trees, they have to get a permit to do it, they have to mitigate those trees, you need to replace them. Um, there's also what's called a new process that up to, it's all based on the, how many count or inches of trees they remove, they actually put that out back. Um, and put twenty-five percent of that, they can pay a fee. Um, I think I put a fee of like three hundred dollars, count with inch, uh, in here, and that's, uh, that was actually based on a, a city engineer. This is research, how did it cost to get this? They're expensive, and that's part of it, and, and that'll be out there, they're expensive. So the whole idea of time, it's the, the fee and lieu, and that gets paid to the city for the city money. And so the idea is, well, how much is it gonna cost the city, buying some trees, if they're, uh, three hundred?
We, uh, when we collect fees for things like tree, something in the world, do we reserve those dollars and spend those, or they just go for it?
We have never collected for a tree, but, uh, in the future, if we do, yes, it'll go back to.
And you can, you can, if you're going to either buy trees, or you can buy any of the trees.
Well, alternatively, there's probably over five thousand trees in the city already.
Yeah.
Coming down with a twenty, thirty year old tree, it's fancy. There's a lot of arguments, they own the tree, and they want to, anyway, they brought it to the property owners.
Um, so that's, so that's the key, where it's also in a, an education. Uh, and you'll see, kind of, through that, the ordinance, I kind of highlighted some sections. Like, I don't really know what the problem, but it's sort of discretionary measures, how much? I just want to be.
Go in Jason and Tenno for, here's your one department dedication, I don't know if I've read, read the quote. It says, it, it, it does put calculation larger of five acres or one acre, or three, three acres, you know. I'm not sure is that larger or smaller than a reefer, because, for example, I think it says that, that you have to do a greater of five acres or one acre for every hundred and thirty-three.
Okay, so no part plan dedication. Okay, so I'm looking, which, which, is it E, I got our criteria. Yeah, so, so planning and zoning may allow, P and L. Yeah, okay, so we may allow a P and L, yeah, less than five acres is required to be dedicated. It calculated in the form of one acre for thirty-three, so if there's, if we look at that, like, how much acreage, and that should, actually, that should be two. Say, it's, it's a, it's sort of a minimum of five acres, but if we calculate the acreage, big for the lawn units. Well, let's say they put in, in Wally, right, that's gonna be less than five acres, but you can allow it to be instead of actually dedicating one acre.
He does, well, I mean, I'll offset some of the plans.
You know, park improvements, park areas, playground equipment.
Playground equipment.
Flakes, side holes, whatever.
So, I'm looking on page fifty-two, it says, it says apartment dedication, the criteria, planning and zoning, that's a plan, that it should be the, uh, I'm following circumstances here, so when there's less than five acres, the park inch, park dedication is upon the front.
So, let's say they, let's say they have a ten thirty-three body, they would only need to dedicate one acre. That's less than five, so you could allow them to say, well, instead of dedicating that one acre to us, just give us forty-three thousand five hundred sixty.
And we can change that number, and then if you look on page fifty, at the bottom, ten oh four, oh oh one B. This is park plan dedication, all the buildings, including all dedication, it is greater of
Yeah.
Five acres or an area equal one per, so if, if you have a seven acre, well, you're gonna do thirty units. You have to dedicate five acres of seven, or maybe, or pay three, so you have to, that's the, that's the mitigant of that, so you don't have any percentage of property taken that or that. All right, well, we can change, we can change that number, we can change anything. That's, that's, I just wanted to make sure that you, you sprint greater, lesser, or the mitigant, so you could have situations in order to not even be.
Yeah, absolutely, so the minimum is five acres.
And if it's not feasible, you can always choose the, the entire acre. And then, this is maybe your, and I don't know, many times, you have anything to do with this.
I believe the unusual circumstances or special conditions, right, has been removed.
But this is the document where it came. Yeah, okay, so that's where, and you just will start with that, the current, the current something, it's because we didn't have a, we didn't have a red line. We don't really know what's taking in and out, what that is, what the government.
It is, yes, and, and going through this, a lot, a lot of things remain, uh, and it'll be a challenge, but I need to do something very similar with the checklist that we did before with this current document. And, and just, you know, there, there's some staff input that we need to do, this is by far more where, if, if you're ready, so. I think, I think, right, so.
Yeah, and, and a lot of that, I'd say to Robert's point, is these are sort of, especially those highlighted are, I want to pinpoint on these, you know, there's no, they're sort of, you know, business decisions of the city domain, that, uh, you know, for review, tell me, you know, I think it should be one acre for every ten, but we need that. That, uh, you know, for review, tell me, you know, I think it should be one acre for every ten body units, whatever you want. Um, so what, so what do we do with four acres?
I'm sorry, we're at forty-three thousand sixty, I broke.
One dollar per square foot, it's a totally arbitrary number that another city has used. And it's. I got that, that's one of those things. And since they're in that house, it's not worth the whole.
One of the things I think is important is. You know, I, I was curious, just to want to inform, describe, take your experience in the current city and anywhere with others, a certain validated form. But. You know, having the protective of civil engineers, architects, engineers, developers, everybody to just, not necessarily, you know. So we have somebody else as. He's the Mr. Handsome. So we can at least focus on, when I'm reading this, I have a little bit of experience with this, but I don't feel like I have any here, no level to take. Just to know whether any of these are. In the ballpark, out of the ballpark, fair, not fair, and just almost, I was glad. Agreed that maybe we can take action, I think, to have some time. Do a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, I'll tell you, a lot of this, especially the traffic. It was something that. I thought it was engineers, sort of developed, like, what, what, what is basically in there, what kind of thing? Um, it's. And I've probably gone with the city of Liberty, I've looked at others, the city of Round Rock. Um, to kind of put this together, um, but in the main thing, then, works. And so, yeah, the whole season thing, like, you know, on SaaS. Or things that were off to your intention, and like, hey, there's a more. You know, let's, let's talk about, um, I can say, you know, the felt side, they say, no, the worst one, we want to do our part. Which is what's been happening in the state legislature lately, we've talked about it, we've been. Um, that's. Um, so, uh, where we are with most guys right now, the most. Falling into you, you didn't think. Well, you got, you got enough on that. Okay, no, that's, 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 that's. Um, yeah, it's just, like I said, hey, maybe it should be ten, no, it's not.
Well, for me, when you apply that, well, I think, I'm just thinking about.
Yeah, so if you've got five rolling units per acre. But now you've got a hundred acres, right? And you've got five hundred rolling units, so you're going to need. And then, you know, like I just said, like I said, but these, these are four looks, aren't they, numbers that I've. Just pulled from other cities, that that's what they have, so I'm going to just. And, and a little bit of. If there's ever an. Two acres.
You know, that, like.
Right, yeah, you know, more, more people you put in the day. Um. The other question.
What, what were the other two cities you said, Mulberry and?
So, I guess, Mulberry's has, because I've already talked through it. They put it, like, um. So that was sort of the main sort of framework, but also the project expert. Um, they're, they're, they're pretty good about, you know, um. Streets and things like that, um, so that, um, it's video metal rock, or, or, or city attorney for ten years. They always have some good ideas, since I was in, I took the city of Round Rock, so I just, I'm like, oh. So, um, you know, it's just kind of, I don't think it's a whole, it's, it's based on what I did in the city of Murray. Um, a lot of that. Input from city staff and engineers, or things that I brought. Yeah, I, it, the main thing is, I think it's worked for Smith, that, well, the one thought is on. And so it really needs to be, you know, it's all these, so, so like, that is. A lot of things in here that, that you're like, hey, this is too much, or not. Okay, um, so that's for the, some sort of the new features, uh, I'll make some changes for the, the variances. I mean. I've been in this room. A bunch of times, comparing. A lot of it is because. Well, ordinance. Was really complicated. If you have to make these findings, if you have to consider all these things. And where do those two things? So the one thing to keep in mind is. Number one, the, the full, the current subdivision variance ordinance, that these are the things that's probably. Really pulled from zoning cases. Some standards, there is, there are no statutes for provision for variances for subdivision ones then. So we can base this whatever we want, to a certain extent. Um, so I just, I was going to put five, um, so that it's just fairly straightforward. Um, you've got, I mean, in special circumstances, it'll probably have. Plan. Necessary for the preparation of the property rights, it's not necessarily. And it's not going to mess up everything around. Um, and then you can always modify what it has for. And I thought that was just a lot more straightforward. Um. A button. And it, it allows you to address those unusual circumstances. Um, in a very straightforward way, like, this is how we do it. And that way, you know, when you have a developer or city staff, who need this ordinance, they know exactly what they're talking about.
So, so irrespective of whether the verbiage is shallow or mad. But it doesn't run a vow of statutory. You can grant a variance, you can consider a grant of variance for anything.
Yes. Anything that's sort of, that you can grant, um, um, if, if it meets all of them.
Right, whatever we decide those things are, it beats that criteria, so irrespective of whether there's a shall or a may. Shall doesn't suggest that it has to be done, there can be no variance granted.
Correct, okay, yes, yes. I see what you're saying, if it's a shall, and that's a variance, right. And if they're, if they just come to like, man, this property is all for me, like, we had that one that was so obvious shade. Buildings all over it, and, you know, so that's. I don't, that's the thing, man.
Jason, what major are you on?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's like a very. Those seven are consecutive.
And relatable, I made it, oh seven?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I know, after I sent my rap to. And noticed that, and just, because I had, because I had a plate holder for seven. For something, and then I ended up taking it out. And then I didn't catch it until, you know. Like, right after I emailed it to him, I'm like, I'm trying to read this. It was sort of the study. But it was put, all the studies in the wrong section, but I ended up just putting them all into. Like, the, the TIA, and then I had a bunch of stuff, like drainage and stuff like that, I haven't had it already, so I, I was, you know, I'll give me that. Uh, since y'all have it already. And there was, there was a lot of my utility, these things like that, and y'all have your own utility, you don't do all that stuff on utilities. I ended up leaving that stuff out, I was going to put all of, you know, they'll try to organize it, sort of, big to little. And so the studies, it's going to be little, because I sort of detail, but I had a. Really the only one that ended up being necessary was the. The TIA, that would be that. And so, sorry, yes, the last section is tented. Now, the one thing I do want to talk to you all about in ten point oh seven, or fifty point oh eight, um, is the notice of hearing. Um, I've had calls about that a bunch of times, I'm like, how? Ever doing this, we, so, number one, there's no requirement for variances. Well, there's no requirements for notices. Um, but it is in my experience that providing a notice to the public, people, they don't have to give it to you. Um, y'all already do it, but it's a little. It's a little unclear, who needs to be notified when, where, I just want to make sure that y'all take a look at the current notice. Um. Provisions are working, for instance, people, um, if there's, if there's been problematic, and you've got this, and all the reasons they did this. And then they come down, a lot of times, and, you know, it's like, they must make something that works.
And that section, Jason, where you talk about the application process.
Mm-hmm.
Alpri's, can you walk through what, what that is? It's twenty percent of them are even the area lots included, but those would be, Jason, for sure. Twenty percent. Even the area of lots included in the protection.
Okay, so. Yeah, this is from the current ordinance. Uh, so the protest gets activated, so they look at twenty percent or, either the area of the lots included, instead of the protection. So next, we, for whatever reason, there's, I understand, there's a division of variance for. A piece of property, and people who didn't like it, still alive. But they even have the right to submit, it should be. Um, and so sometimes, probably because of rezone. By the city, when they're not legal, you know, and then they're going to find it. Yeah, so they don't see like the variance standard, and this is all came from the zone. So I knew, I knew, I think we just kind of worked through, plenty of them wanted to do, kind of, those.
That's a key point regarding, you mentioned back to chapter fourteen, the zoning, you talked about a lot with, um. This, but the rest of that, because you go back to zoning departments, and that's one, so that's another thing we want to consider. The future, or what's in the size lot, do you want, provide, do you want, so, this is just addressing the subdivision portion. We also, I mean, that. This is B twelve inches above. The crown of the road, so, and you get that in here, so there's still some work we need to do.
Well, I'll tell you, so the zoning stuff, the same though.
Yes.
Lots of all that stuff, now they stand as, as, uh, the. Yeah, so. You know, and that's why a lot of cities are going towards unified. That's probably one piece of that. This is, this is the pitch to my, and I've seen it, I'm like, why? In my experience, if they look, they're more complicated, and, but, you know, whatever, so, um. Yeah, then, like, they're saying that, the thing about the subdivision. Where it has, this is how we shop it up. Now, then a lot of times, uses that follow, like, I would say, in a concept. That concept, they, they want to go ahead and find like, get approved. All the uses they planted there have to be, have to be done. So maybe, maybe say, hey, you want to do much stuff in here, I hear that's a new design, so maybe. They all kind of work together, they need to talk together, um. But it, that's. It can be a challenge. And you want it to be sort of user friendly, on the staff side, you know, a, a citizen, it's honest. And it's just challenging.
One, one thing that, that is, actually, a lot of followers, is, is. Pause, pause, the term, usually a basis, especially. And oh, four blocks. Which has been removed. Yes. And then you have the side of the. Thank, six hundred feet. Equally. Is the width three hundred? These are all things we have to decide. We all have to decide.
And the, and the other thing to think about is, you can leave block. Or if you just say, hey, please be. You know, the right sides, so that, and then the great thing for block lanes is for Russian partners. They have release and fire, and the, and that's hit to every building, every person. That's, that's, that's sort of the reason. Block. Is, is the version. And so, so the one thing I, I'm thinking about. Correct. Park landmark, you know, like, if this, if this is good life, it's just too long, it's too short. Um, you know, is it going to, is your job to, yeah.
Has created challenges for developers trying to stay within that.
Yeah, so.
Before you three hundred.
Yeah, yeah, that, that was a lesson. Yes, um, and like I said, the sort of with discretionary standards, you know, all, you know, business decisions considering. I thought, I'm sure there's a lot more in there. Um, where, you know, with, you know, with, with SAP. Um, and council, and, and whatever. Needs to decide, any good idea, bad idea. I'm here to tell you the good idea, bad idea. I'm here to make your good ideas. Yeah, so one, one item I didn't want to see was the monuments. For it, um, it's the two point four. Oh, no, so. Yeah, like a four feet, four foot long, or, yeah, a three, um.
At some point in time, we need to get to the, uh, sort of, the burial business.
Yeah, so.
This is fine, this is, this is fine, this is fine, it's fine.
Oh, four point oh oh nine.
The monuments for the, um. Where the corners of a property.
Oh, yeah, you're right. It's corner, corner mine.
Yeah, so.
It's either grade or an inch above, or four, four inches, about inch fifty.
Yeah, so the monuments should be a concrete post, four to the nine, and they're four feet long. Why?
So you can hit it with your.
I was going to say, this is private, and maybe in the, I would put that. If your monuments. Or whatever, whether it's a, you know, a stamp in it, or whatever. So, we can take that out, but, um, I left it in, if it was already there, maybe there was a reason.
You thought, I mean, it's a thought, really.
These monuments that are very much ground, they're going to be long, and top of it is just below grade. So it's a four foot long monument, four inches, it's all buried in the ground, it's not. It's all.
All mark, yeah.
It's why, certainly.
Yeah, certainly, I'd say, by the way, there, there's two and a half feet. So maybe that's where it came from, is that standard, that practice? But.
Well, this is, yes, this top of the monument should be set at eighty degree, I'm going to say, it's just below grade in. So, you got a four foot piece of concrete that's very.
They were, they have the city manager approving such.
You're going to speak, you're going to. But, so, so to Robert's point on that one, you're going to see the city manager making a lot of decisions in the ordinance. He wouldn't mind that the city manager is defined as the city manager for. So, you've got public works, you can say, public works are, like, me. Seeing that in other cities where they. To its own department, don't exist. So, um, I just, that's sort of the way to kind of. Fix that, give the city the flexibility to make it what they want, and the department head, and staff, and whatever. Whatever you all put in, they, city manager calls it in, but the city manager needs, city manager before whoever, whoever inside. Okay? All right, um. So. So it's all with the. And this, um. This, I didn't even know. Until I was doing this ordinance. And I was looking at the technical government code, and I couldn't see any notes. As, as we mentioned, I'm a county all reason, I am. No, that's. We know what he. And then, um, TTA, they all have been talking about. It's nobody, and then T T A, and they all have to talk about. Annual conference, it's a day, talked to one of the person, they're like, yeah, we heard about it, but, no one made any decision to talk about it. So, this, in my mind, and my, and how you can know if it's, it's been, it's been approved. You know, it's been moving on my Senate and and the House, and on the governor's desk, one time, no. Do, he's gonna solve it. If he had an army, I don't know. Um, what the main thing I took away is, governing body of municipality. They not require an analysis, study, document, or similar.
Please use your microphone, folks, aren't you?
So this language says, uh, the governing body of municipality cannot require an analysis, study, document, or similar part of. Maybe part of that development permit for a subdivision of land that is not explicitly allowed by state law. There are no, there are almost no analyses, studies, documents, or that are exclusively allowed by state law. Cities have come up at all.
So this overrides all?
Possible, and so. What I can say what happened in twenty nineteen, since when they passed that shock block legislation, the City Attorney Association. That New Austin said, how do we deal with? Waiting for something very similar to that to happen, to decide, how do we deal with? Because development permit? There we go. So when they come in to build, that, when I read this literally, it says. If they want to build a street. We can ask for the plans backstreet.
Or. Or traffic impact.
Or traffic impact analysis, or environmental, or a traffic fire real, or.
Tree service. Some less stuff, you just.
Right, so. I think, I think kind of thing, like, there's gotta be a way to keep stuff in, if the city need. Right, you've got to know how wide the street is, you've got to know how much scrap this development is generating. I mean, you. Um.
And how did that, I don't want to say that on everything, I just say about.
And no, I'm not, no, we can talk right, that's, that's what, um. Something very similar happened with the shock block legislation, it was kind of a surprise, I'm like, this is a big deal, why can't we really talk about? Uh, let me see if it says, I've got the. You know, not a hundred percent. This is, there's, there's a bunch of other stuff in here, too, that's. This was the worst thing. I was looking at the news, I was like, I like a little. We can probably figure out later on that, but then, I said. It's pretty, uh, bad. And there was, there was a very harsh movement in the conversation, and there was a bill that went granted to the city, the building that became. So like, why did that? So, uh, that, fortunately got shut down, but there, there was sort of, I think, a remnant of that idea. Um, and it's. In my opinion, you got, you got places like Austin and San Antonio. That, like, to pass all the licenses, and make things difficult on people, um, for the sole purpose of, uh. Hoping our local governor in the eye, and. Unfortunately, cities like Smithville, and Wobry, and everyone else, didn't do anything at all. So, any questions, question, value made, or? If I'm, I'm gonna, I'm kinda waiting for this to. Like I said, in progress, going along now, I'll pull in, and then see what happened last, the last time, it was back to the topic, there was a work group, and said, how do we get it? So, I can fully imagine that happening, and, and, uh, I've already talked about. Your, my, my colleagues, if it is, say, hey, if it's added, like.
Representative Richard. You know?
You know, you know about the A D units, the.
Thank you.
I've been reviewing, since you're our planning and zoning, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
Yeah. We have a big time now.
Are you, are you gonna? And so. If anybody wants.
You want a fixer.
You might speak. So number seven is conception and help collection of subdivision targets, and it'll just be.
No action.
Thanks, any questions?
Well, what I would like to see, before we can move on, is if we go back and scrub it, give me your recommendations. Jason, well, the staff, are we doing the same thing? Give that a little next, please.
Maybe I know, I know you a couple things, the notice. That demolition. And I know there was another ordinance.